You didn't buy it, they stole our car.
Or do we?
It broke.
Folks.
Yeah, we got plenty of coal.
Howdy, howdy. I'd like to call to order the city council's work session for October 22nd at 5:00 PM. Welcome, everyone. All right.
I don't usually.
And this evening, we have item number two A is a presentation of the TIP Strategies Final Flugerville Workforce Study Presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my privilege to introduce you all to Tom Solomon and Alexis Angelo with TIP Strategies. As you know, over the past year, we've provided presentations back in April to talk about the Flugerville Workforce Study, meetings with the council, meetings with community groups, meetings with the Community Development Corporation Board, and here we are today to give you a final presentation and update on this important workforce study, which is going to be a great tool for our community.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be back in front of you guys. And last week, we did have an opportunity to meet with the PCDC Board, and they asked a lot of really good questions. And so we tried to answer those on Friday, and if there are other questions today, we're definitely open to them.
What was the most surprising question they asked?
They asked about the definition of living wage. It's an interesting one. There was a question about industrial engineers. And I think may have been Jeff, the chair, who's got some knowledge around that, who asked for clarification, and so we were prepared to do that today because in the labor statistics data, industrial engineers includes a lot of engineers who've touched the industrial process, so it's capturing, considering the semiconductor industry and in Tesla and a number of other places. Lots of other good questions, but. Well, the, I know we were asked to maybe present for 10 or 15 minutes and then leave enough time for you guys to have questions. So if there's anything after this that you have questions about, you know, we're happy to follow up on that if it doesn't get covered today. But the plan itself, just reminding you guys, we were planning to do a very sort of economic development focused plan, that's what we had pitched, but there are a lot of questions from council saying, hey, we would like this to be valuable to our CTE programming, we'd like it to be valuable to the residents, looking for opportunities for them also, so we made modifications to it in the beginning, and hopefully we've met that. Do I have a clicker?
I have.
Oh, you have a clicker, okay. So as Terry mentioned, we did a lot of interviews. That's one of our hallmarks is making sure that we're talking to those who are actually, you know, in the field, who are going to use this information. The components, let's go forward. Just a reminder, one of the other modifications that we made to the plan is we took the four sort of industries that were identified in your previous strategic plan and added skill traits to it, because that was something that was important. So we did that. One of our deliverables, and you guys may not have had a chance to look at that yet, but it's an online tool that is in the program called Tableau, which allows you to visualize the data pulled together, and there are four primary components to that. The first one, just understanding your workforce commuting patterns. The second one, really understanding, you know, who's working here now and what occupations are they in and are those growing occupations? The third piece is a little more dynamic to kind of get a better feel because some of the workforce data is dated. So we looked at the last two years of job postings. So we go from May of 2022 through April of 2024, and there are tools now that allow us to look at job postings and understand which occupations are currently in demand and what the skills are and certifications are that are required for those occupations. And so a lot of our demand data is based on that. And then the last piece is, which was one that was very useful for the CTE programs, we looked at, you know, who within the area and CTE programs, what they're offering and where there might be gaps.
And Tom, if you'll go back to that.
Yes.
So I was the culprit who started all the conversation and questions last time. On the worker and resident dynamics, you said this is a tool that's available. How do we use it in reference to, for example, does it actually give you real data on the commuting overview and some of the other elements of that particular box there?
Yeah, so you could, like, if you go through to the commuting, you can actually see where people are going to and where they're coming from.
And that's, yes, and that's real accurate information.
Yeah, it's, it's as good as we can get in terms of, you know, where, what.
And I'm sorry, where did that information come from?
This is from the Bureau of Labor Statistics.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's a little bit dated, it's a two-year lag time. There are some tools out there that we don't use, but I've seen others use that use cell phone data to get real time where people are going from, but it's a little.
I was just wanting to understand the relevance of that particular dataset there.
Yep, yep. And the other thing that it does show is it'll show you the types of sectors that those are commuting. So in the interest of time.
We have plenty of time.
Are you, okay, please let me know. This is a very dynamic tool, and this is, these are static slides. So know that with most of these slides, you can go in and actually change up the dates, you can change up the sectors if you want, so that you can see the things yourself if you'd like to, so we just pulled some select slides. And the first one's one that you guys already know, you know, the number of people that leave Flugerville to work in other areas in Austin, you know, is a pretty big number. So about 93% of the people, you know, are.
So this is through 2021?
Yeah, this is 2021.
Okay.
Yeah, and we haven't seen, like, big shifts in this data as we move forward, even with some of the COVID data now rolling into it, unless you've had some major new opening of a company that is, you know, people moving, you know, Austin is still seeing the, you know, similar patterns. We don't, we don't, we wouldn't expect to see a huge change in that if we were to have a 2022.
And so the live and work ban, and again, I may be getting ahead of myself again, does that give us any information on the types of jobs that people stay here and work here for?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we could pull that out.
That's fine.
But the next one, as I mentioned, the net loss of people that are leaving, are leaving for, you know, professional technical jobs, primarily much higher paying jobs, but, you know, that's, that happens for a lot of communities that are in the Austin sort of orbit, just because not everybody lives in the same place that Tesla or Samsung or some of these other companies are. But it represents an opportunity if you can create more jobs to keep some of those folks here, you've got a pretty good laborhood pull.
I can see where the healthcare and social services would be as high as it is.
Yep, exactly, exactly. Let's go forward. As I mentioned, the demand tool that we have, the component that's based on job postings, this is a very dynamic piece, you can actually go in and look at by your target sector, where people, where the job postings are within each of those sectors. So this particular one is based on that, and advanced technology and manufacturing. So as you would see, most of the job postings are listing Austin as the home of that employment, but Flugerville still, there were 486 job, unique job postings over that two-year period within that sector. And if I had this up and it was in the dynamic mode, I could click and look at skill trades, I could click and look at retail, and I can kind of see where the job postings are. Job postings don't capture all jobs that are in demand, some are word of mouth, but this is the closest that we've been able to come to get closer to real-time data in terms of where the demand is. You can look at that across the different sectors. Let's go to the next slide.
Can we back up on this one slide further? Back up on that one. Am I reading this right, that the people who are coming into Flugerville to work are either working in construction or education, and basically that's it?
No, what this is, is this is the net flow.
Right.
So it's not the total number.
Right.
Because you have people that commute in here that are working in retail and working in a number of other jobs.
Right, so some people who work in education live in Flugerville and they go to Austin, but on balance, 1,700?
Yeah, you've got 1,700 more that are coming in.
That are coming in.
Coming in.
In education.
And or leaving.
With construction, that's a little less than 1,000 on balance. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was reading that right. Thank you.
Yep, and once again, as the mayor pointed out, it's, there's a lag time here, so some of that may have shifted, depending on if there was a change in the sort of occupational demand here.
I also feel like the fact that we were also coming out of the pandemic is like, is the underbelly that we're not really discussing, because I know that that also probably affects some of these changes as well.
Yeah.
Because I'm looking at the data you gave.
Yep, yeah, I mean, one of the things that's impacted is the, you know, work from home. We're seeing a lot of shifts there, not as much as people or companies will say, but there's still a lot of folks working from home.
How is working from home reflected in this data?
What's that?
How is working from home reflected in this data? Because if someone's working from home, but their office is, you know, in Austin, are they still counted as commuting out, or are you counting them as, you know, live work?
In that net data, it's, it's, if you live in Flugerville, but your job is counted still in Austin, even if you're living from home, your payroll through.
Your payroll issues.
So we, so do I have a good number of how many people are working from home these days?
I've got a different dataset that I'd be happy to share with you to show kind of overall trends in the greater Austin area in terms of numbers that are working from home.
Does that include the recent shift in Samsung and Amazon?
So the recent shift in going back to.
Yeah.
To office. I think it's still based on some survey data that has a lag time, so I'll be happy to research that, share that back with you.
What's the timeframe?
For.
For your lag time? Like 18 months past?
Yeah, I think it may be more like two years.
Okay.
But.
So it goes like what councilmember Holliday was talking about there?
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense. That's fine.
Well, once again, I, we, we don't use the cell phone data, and for somebody that's really looking for that, being able to see who's staying home and who's leaving, because I've got a number of companies right now that tell me everybody's coming back to work, but you go through those offices and the people aren't really there. So, so those of you that are in the real estate business know what I'm talking about.
But that's a different dynamic.
Yes.
I mean, because what you're having is ultimately, you have companies like Google and Facebook that built these tremendous edifices, but they never moved them in, so consequently, that's, you know.
Yeah, and I don't know, Crystal, if there's anybody else who has looked at, how many of your residents, you know, have you done any other survey work to determine who's working from home to get?
Well, we got a 10 out of 10.
They said 80%.
80%.
Back in the office.
Back at the office.
Back in the office.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that was.
We all assumed that it was much lower, so, you know, to hear you say that, you know, the people are not there, I'm like, ah, where are they?
But I, I will see what we have on the Austin area that may be valuable to you guys, get you what I can. So there are more data points in here. The, with that same tool, you can look at what industries are within the job postings, semiconductor, engineering, and remind, you know, this is a reminder, this went through April of this year, and I know there were a lot of job postings from Tesla earlier in that period, and then there were layoffs that happened last year, and then.
Oh, the way you put it, there were job postings, God bless you, and then they weren't.
Yes, yes, yes. And then, yeah, and I know with Samsung, there's, you know, they paused in some areas in terms of hiring. But I do think that this still is reflective of the categories in which there is likely going to continue to be demand. We're working on a project right now with Workforce Solutions Rural Capital Area to specifically look at semiconductor and what that demand may be over a period of time. And right now, the best bet is going to be more of a scenario model as opposed to a forecast, because right now, we don't know when that may start back up and what that means for suppliers. But Flugerville is part of the area that we're looking at, so that information will be shared, you know, with Crystal and the team.
I guess from my identification, one of the things that we often hear about is that we have an inordinate amount of flex space in industrial here in Flugerville as compared to the rest of the region, you know, our juxtaposition as what we have from there. The jobs that you're conveying right here tend to go ahead and dive into industrial, you know, those aspects of that as well. Consequently, those are the jobs that you're also saying that drive, I'm assuming, correct me if I'm wrong, from a regional standpoint, are the ones that demands from a region too, because they were talking about working with workforce industrial. How do you get someone like us, who want to have that Class A real estate, they realize the market, I mean, they're, the banks are coming for the, for the, I mean, they're coming to downtown Austin in the next year, year and a half to take buildings, this is what's going to happen. How do, what do we do to incentivize to work for that? Or do we just, we're a city, so do we just sit it out until the market changes and the conditions and we get what we like here? Because, I mean, you're doing an excellent job conveying this and telling us, dude, these are their jobs, and we're like, well, you know, what about some of these C-suite people?
Yeah, I know that if you're talking about more of a regional headquarters, you know, somebody that's going to come in, I know that wasn't one of the sectors that we looked at, it's likely to be picked up in IT, in some of these areas, you could find a regional headquarters that is going to bring in and do back office or going to do some type of handle. Wasn't really playing into this and some of the other corporate headquarters.
No, and that's fair, you're telling us, hey, listen, these are the facts, that's what we need to know, you know?
Yeah.
We needed the facts, so that's fine.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering how, you know, residential's fine, but how long, or do you, you've been doing this for a long time, Tom. How long do you think it's a bounce back until we have something in the commercial aspect that are going more to what we'd like to see?
Yeah, I mean, the, the amount of space that's still available, that is corporate-related, that leases still haven't expired, you know, in the greater Austin area, I'm not a real estate economist, there may be people in the room who know better than I do around that, but I think it's still going to be a while.
Okay.
It's still going to be a while, unless you have, you know, had a particular product that was already available and happened to meet the needs, and you were offering up something that was more competitive than the existing space that's in Austin right now.
So one of the thoughts that just I had was in reference to it, Mr. Mateo is saying in kind of the, the statistic you're talking about and the scenario or forecasting is, at what, how do you recognize when that tsunami's coming? And the fact that we may or may not be ready to deal with that, is there a way, are there indicators, or do we just have to be sharp and look for them in terms of, okay, so here comes this tsunami wave, commercial, office, head, you know, headquarters, HQ, all the good stuff is coming, all of a sudden, here we are, oh, we're behind the eight ball and we miss it.
Yeah, there's not a perfect answer to that, but, you know, I did some work in the Dallas area recently for Rockwall, just on the eastern side of a higher-end suburban community, and this was about two and a half years ago. And so during that time, when downtown office, we're still suffering from the pandemic, downtown office was vacating, and Class A office space in the suburban communities, peripheral communities, or adjacent communities, are, you know, we're seeing a demand for Class A office space, and so you were starting to see some building actually happening. But, you know, of course, you had communities like Frisco and others who had been building and had the product, they had Rockwall, that it was actually starting to build product beyond their traditional industrial, and so there was a demand there. And, you know, since that's where most of the people were living, who were commuting into the office space in downtown Dallas, they felt like they could support, you know, an engineering office, an accounting office, and there were several announcements during that time. Right now, I don't, you know, I don't know, I think that is also softening to a certain extent. The, the nice thing that we have is you do, you are seeing, you know, companies going back to office, just probably not at the rate that they're asking for yet.
No, I mean, I think it's like any risk you take with any investment, is like it's almost, comes down to speculative development. It's like, we know it's coming, we don't know when it's coming, but it's coming, we better be prepared, what are we doing to prepare? And I think that's where we are.
Yeah, and, and, you know, one of the recommendations that we're making, reconsider sort of a longer-term recommendation, which is not necessarily part of a workforce plan, is really more part of a comprehensive plan or a community plan, which is your quality of place. And, you know, those types of, for peripheral communities that are going to be successful are the ones that people are going to want to live in too. It's not just a, you know, because the office space in downtown, and you want to live where the school district is, in Round Rock or Flugerville or somewhere like that, you better have the housing offering and the quality of place offering.
Yeah.
And so investments there, I think in the long term, is why we made that as a long-term recommendation, the best thing that you can do for Class A office space is to continue to invest in your school and in your walkable community and your downtown and your access to other amenities.
So if we keep it edumicated, edumicated people will come?
Yes.
But one of the things I keep hearing though, it's, it's almost the real estate before the jobs. And help me understand the lead time on, on the real estate and the development, because is there, is there a scenario where we just need to be poised and ready to build what the market demands when they're ready? Or, or is this one of those things where unless the building is already, is move-in ready, you know, we're going to miss out on the opportunity?
Yeah, I, I have a little better feel for some of the industrial advanced manufacturing over the last couple of years, because we have experienced this reshoring. I have a little less sort of confidence.
Well, give me an idea on the, on the advanced manufacturing.
What's that?
On the advanced manufacturing, how do you feel?
Those, you know, those over the last four years who have had, you know, spec space, it's been gone. If you've got cold storage, anything logistics, distribution, you know, it's, it's been gone. And those who have started that, Georgetown, for example, actually put in a lot of spec space during that time.
They did.
And then they were successful in filling a lot of it up. And I don't know how long that's going to, you know, last, a lot of it is just overall, you know, economy and demand, but that's been a renaissance for industrial.
Are they landlords or are they sellers? Because that is some nice spec space they have on 30.
You know, but I mean, you know, the, one of the recommendations that came out of your overall strategic plan was, you know, higher ed, higher education, being able to get some kind of a center of excellence, whether it's engineering or it's something that's offered here. I think that could be, you know, a draw from not just quality of place, but being seen as a, having something that's an anchor.
So.
That they could partner with, but I don't know if that hits the office side, that's, that may be more still a.
But that's interesting, because you talk about things like ACC and what they mean, like you're doing workforce. So you know, I mean, they are literally seen as the flagship for not just Central Texas, but for the state of Texas, and now that they've changed the funding models for community colleges, they're even being rewarded even further so. So I'm assuming that would come into play, I'm assuming schools like Texas A&amp;M, you know, that's second best school in Texas, you know, that would come into play too as well.
Texas Tech is. Yeah, yeah, I mean, and you, you know, you're, it's not a, you're not an asylum, you know, or you're not operating in a bubble, it's because you've got all these different groups, you know, the partnership between Temple College and TSTC up in that Hutto campus, I don't know where that is right now, but I know that was a big push, and then, you know, Texas State with right up here in Round Rock.
Round Rock campus.
And the healthcare, you know, the focus there. I think there is still an opportunity on the engineering side, because it is coming up in so many different advances here, you know, in terms of the industries that are growing in the Austin area, from semiconductor to automotive to computer.
What do we do with the school district on that? Because if we have this information, and obviously you're telling us, dude, we engineering, that's money, this is phenomenal, we do this well, how do we utilize this information? How do we, how do we better partner with the school district to make sure we're turning out those folks who are elected?
Yeah, so our midterm recommendation, because we were asked by the, the PCDC to say, hey, let's look at, you know, if you had to pick out of these 10 recommendations, what might be short-term, what might be mid, you know, short-term being 18, 24 months, midterm being two to four years. midterm being two to four years and then beyond, what would they be? And number one was actually supporting entrepreneurship. It, it's not typically a workforce strategy, but it's very much a talent strategy because being able to keep people here and create the buzz around entrepreneurship could result in some things in the short term, maybe even a company considering here. But it's really, it's a talent strategy. The, the second strategy is really the number one priority for the community is around the CTE programs, the program for the, your new investment there. But we looked at that and said, well, that, it's going to take a while. If it's built, you have a little time to figure out the programming and it may shift between now and when that programming starts, you know? But that's more of a two to four year. And then the longer term is what I mentioned earlier, the quality of place investments that might be made.
So what I'd like to, let's inject at this point, I know you mentioned just a few minutes ago in terms of higher education, part of the strategic plan and so forth, and the impact on Flugerville. And unless, I don't think you would know this, and Terry, I don't know if anybody in PCDC would know this, maybe Crystal, I'm not sure, is we're just eight miles from the higher education center in Hutto. And I'm wondering what impact that had in that community? Was it what they were looking for? Or is it just sitting there for five years down the road or next week? And so, I mean, if we're thinking about higher education, let's look to Hutto and see what happened there to make sure it doesn't happen here. Or maybe it should happen here.
Yeah, and the scale at which they invested in that, you know, that, that's a good question. You know, what's the, what's the return there?
Cause you don't, there's not a lot of buzz about that education center. There really isn't, unless you know Doug.
No.
Doug hadn't heard then.
No, I don't, I don't hear a whole lot.
Yeah. How are you guys doing? Keep rolling or?
Keep going.
So the, on the data side, you know, you can look at the industries that are hiring, the actual companies that are doing most of the posting during that time period. You can actually see the occupations that are the leading occupations that are, that are posted. And a lot of that data also has not just the occupations, but the education required for the occupations, the skill sets that are required to those occupations, which I think will be valuable for the CTE program to kind of know what, what is being posted out there. It's not going to catch everything. One of the things that, you know, you guys have a great resource in capital area workforce and they do profiles and they give information to educate those that are job seekers, which is great information. You know, I want to, we try not to replicate that. We turn off of job postings, what they're doing, you know, there's no reason.
Tamara and them are very good at what they do.
Yes, they are.
So going back to the employer basket.
Yes.
If you will. So you said if we click on that, we'll get all sorts of good data. Does it also give you the turnover data?
Um, it doesn't give turnover data in this data set.
Do you know why I'm asking it? I guess.
Yeah, it absolutely. So can either counter it or, you know, have, have strategies in place. So it's kind of a unique exercise that we're going to go through. We'll have to be creative, but we'll share that, that better public, since that's going to be public, we'll share that back with you. On the recommendations themselves, I actually go to this slide. Oh, go back to this. Yeah, there we go. As I mentioned, so within the data set, what's the woman's name? Terry.
Terry.
Terry with the CTE program. So she's got the data and is already looking at what are, what's being offered by all of the school districts in the area. So you can, you know, you can see Round Rock and you can see Vander and Austin ISD and see what they're offering and compare that to what she's, what they've been offering through the CTS, they do their new program, they can look for gaps. One of them, we felt like was an opportunity around electrical training, electrician training, which could be a career path on the electrical engineering that's in demand. But this data set is probably, is going to be very valuable to the school district as they begin that programming. And then let's go to this one. As I mentioned earlier, the job postings data lists the different skill areas required that are commonly required within those occupations that are in demand. And so this goes on, I can't remember how many different skills we listed here, but it's way off the page. This will also be useful as they do the curriculum for those programs to make sure that it matches with what's needed. And then if you want, we can do a high level on the overall strategies that we're recommending.
Yeah, you've been talking through them anyway without, and one of the things, when you talked about the CTE, I was going to actually ask Terry. I know there's been delay in them either looking at funding or something at the school district, what they're doing, regarding building their center.
Yeah, but I know Crystal has met with them about some of the process with that as well as some of the upcoming grants. I don't know the timeline on that specifically. The timeline specifically on the CTE from your meetings with the school?
I have a PowerPoint on that. I'd be happy to share it. I think it was within three years, but I can share the PowerPoint if they could.
So 2027.
But I don't know, if, if you'd like us to go through these 10 at this high level, I just, I was going to say that within the document itself and within the PowerPoint, we have a detail with all the actions underneath the 10 of these.
Yes, you do.
And I mentioned that we had coded numbers one, six and seven, and I talked about those as being priorities, short, medium, long term. But there are, you know, seven other recommendations.
I'm sorry, Tom, which were the top three? Yeah, I know you covered that.
Yeah, so, so the top three in time order is number seven was the entrepreneurship and it being something that in a way is already, you know, in process, you know, you're doing things. It's really about what's, what's being offered up to existing employees in the area and training around entrepreneurship that could lead to starting your own business as sort of a career pathway as opposed to just, you know, I got to, got to work for somebody else. That's what fits in that box. The medium was all about CTE. All the actions happen now because you're starting the programming now, but the benefits are likely going to be, you know, a couple of years out before students are actually enrolled in that. But Mayor, I know when we met last week, you pointed out, it's like some of these programs are already in place. It's not like we're waiting for that CTE, you know, to be started before we start, you know, a lot of these programs, a lot of, and then long-term is that quality of place.
So I guess I get, I get a little confused on this part. When it comes to CTE, who are we training? Is it the people who live here or is it kids in the schools? Is it, are we offering classes to people from out of the area so they come work here? Who, who are we training with CTE?
Yeah, so your CTE right now is your students, right? With the district. That's the primary focus of the programming. But one of our recommendations is that it be kind of opened up beyond that for adult retraining of others that are residents.
And then what jobs are we training them for?
So, so the, the programs that are offered, you know, would include those that are in demand. And so the in-demand is a combination of what's here and what's in the re. So we can, you know, your district right now trains people that leave the district.
Well, and I get, I don't know, let me, let me go ahead and say this part out loud. I, I get some, some feedback from, you know, some folks that sometimes the CTE is just teaching our high school kids to do a lesser job than they would eventually be able to do and provide, you know, a local employer with cheaper labor because they don't have to pay for training and they can get a pipeline straight to the schools. I want to make sure their students are, are achieving the, the grandeur that they, that they should be afforded. So I want to make sure that our CTE programs are not just, you know, a corporate subsidy for, you know, getting in medium to low skilled labor.
I would say this, when Senate Bill 1 came around eight years ago, maybe nine.
Which one was SB 1?
Yeah, that was the bill, or actually that's be SB 2, because SB 1 is always the first, is the bill, is the budget. They specifically talked about, you know, you, it was the track system. And okay, listen, you're going to have to pick what you're going to do, what classes are you going to take? Are you going to go, are you going to college track or are you going to go the workforce track? One of the things that when I, when I went down there and testified and complained about, I was like, listen, I'm really concerned, particularly from underserved communities, that these kids, if you tell me I don't have to take algebra and I can go ahead and get out, well, screw that. I want to go that track because I'm going to go from there. And then by the time it's going to be late in high school, it's like, oh crap, I need to switch up because I'm going to actually go to college or do something like that as well. I was really, really apprehensive how that was. And come to find out, it's worked really well. Like, you know, like, I mean, the training, the, the opportunities that are made available to these students, these aren't, these aren't mid-level jobs. These are high-paying jobs are from that. It's been one of the frustrations I'll be, we're all talking now about everything, let's talk about now. It's one of the frustrations I've had about not having ACC here in Flugerville. Because I can't tell you how many times Samsung has come to me with jobs. Hey, listen, they come out, you're making $70,000, you're going to be doing X, Y and Z right there as well. We can do it, council member, with the school district, but anything in your city, sorry, because ACC is the training arm that goes with that as well. We're not able to go ahead and do so and work on these jobs. And it's, and it's really surprising to me because I kind of would just think, like I said, like, I mean, you ask eighth grade Rudy, like, like I'm really supposed to know what I'm going to do, you know, when I get older? And I would totally take the easy way out, but these jobs are high-paying and rough model jobs. Additionally speaking, what's been very curious, because you brought it up a couple of times, is the upskill training. The school district has been doing that for years. They've used Northwest Elementary at night from six to eight PM to go and, 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 and they have daycare, which is something else that's really important too, because if you're going to have these jobs, you need to make sure, hey, you've got kids, everything else organized with that as well. They've utilized that area for, hey, listen, and they advertise it in our school, you know, those flyers that we get, whatever that flyer is, about these upscaling opportunities. And they've done a remarkable job with that. And to your point though, these people that are being trained probably aren't likely going to be having jobs in Flugerville. They're likely going to be able to have these jobs because, because what we're seeing right here is that the jobs that we're looking for and the training we're looking for, that's not necessarily falling in our area, that's falling in the region and what the regional demands are, but that's not falling in our area. So the question becomes, I'm still with you, I still like the vision of, okay, listen, I want C, you know, C-suite, I want, I want a.
I want to bring the good jobs to the people.
Yeah, with that as well.
Not train people to do whatever job is already there.
But these jobs are done well, just like the fire department. Remember when we created the firefighter academy, we were like, okay, how much are these people going to get paid? And these kids get paid really well at 18, I think it was like 60, 65,000 or something like that. You know, once they get their training, it's like maybe a year, year and a half or something like that after work somewhere as well. So they're getting paid, I mean, for an 18-year-old kid, that's good money. Like, I mean, and you don't have all the college debt that we all got and what we're doing with that. But yeah, I, you're right, you don't want to just put something out there where it's like, okay, you have this job at the level, but I don't see that.
Well, I mean, I actually don't see it as the end all be all, be all like. My hope even, even for my daughter is that while she wants to be a nurse, where there are things you can go get a trade for a couple of years, you can be a x-ray technician. You say you want to travel, you can be a traveling x-ray technician. And my hope is that when she gets in the field, that it will feed that desire that she has. And that's really just the beginning, I hope.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know that, that this particular program is designed to accomplish the goal that I, I think I heard you say. You said you wanted to, to create a workforce that attracts the jobs here. Well, if I train for a job that isn't here and I'm like sitting around on my thumbs waiting for that job to get here, I'm looking at for a regional opportunity, right? I'm, I'm, I'm doing some traveling, I'm, I'm doing something in between. And so, and so it, I think the, I think that point of convergence has to be in the near future in terms of, we want to, if it's a two-year training program, I want to train someone, I hope we want to train someone that will have a job in two years. And so the, the onus on us or on PCDC is to, is to combine this with, with an economic development program that's, that's attracting that and adding this as an arm to that, saying, hey, look, we are now training for these jobs, you know, bring all your headquarters here because we're, we're training all the next generation of CEOs here, or whatever the appropriate analogy is.
Are we going to have a conversation again one day about ACC?
I think we're having that conversation now.
Cause it's not on this long-term goal.
By the way, why does his microphone sound so much better than ours?
I'm leaning in. I mean, to, to your, to your point, I think, I think we, we just, we're working towards acquiring some property that might give us a great bargaining chip for a future university, whether it's ACC or someone else.
Yeah, but we have to keep Flugerville affordable though, remember?
We start nerdy.
All right, shots fired. Keep going, keep going with your presentation.
All right. Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to open it up for any additional questions, unless you want us to work recommendation by recommendation, that's up to you guys.
Well, and I, and I appreciate, Tom, the, the presentation you have. And I'm sure there's a lot of data that we'll be able to go through and manipulate and extrapolate and all the other fancy words to, to make us understand, especially those of us who are on the PCDC board and/or the rest of the council to understand as opportunities come up is, you know, yeah, we've looked at the data, this is, looks like where we need to go. And getting back to my point about, are, will we be ready? You know, and in terms of the CTE stuff, which is more of a long-term, but long-term is too long for me, is that, you know, students and/or adults who want to retrain, you know, have a certain need. I mean, if I'm a adult worker who wants to learn how to weld or whatever, then I know it's going to take me a while to do that. I mean, but I can't, especially if I've got a family and people to support, I can't do that too long. And so I think each individual, whether they're adults or students, need to figure out, okay, this, this is, this is my goal. And I always bring up my, my son who graduated from PHS and went straight to the Texas State Technological College in Waco. And it was a two-year program. And, but he knew he was going in two-year program. He didn't know what was going to happen at the end of two years. You know, he did a great job, he finished top of his class, and within a week, he already had a job. So that's the kind of transition that I would hope that as we move forward and as we think about whatever the development models that we put together for future growth and training, that it, it, it happens almost immediately, not, okay, I've already got my training, I got to wait around six months. I may not be working in Flugerville, somebody said that, I may have to go work somewhere.
Tom, you're so emphatic about the seven. And I was reading your back of it, your back of the charge, your overall report's pretty good, because like you said, you expand on it further. Why, is it just because that's something short-term that we can easily, it's an easy left, longing for? Is that the way you look at it? Because we have an inordinate amount of entrepreneurs or why is that such a high?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to say that I had a, you know, very complicated matrix with different factors that, you know, I weighed in for. But really it's more of a, you know, you guys are down this path of entrepreneurship. And I've seen other communities that it's this sort of buzz that gets created around entrepreneurship and trying to, having some of that buzz allow you to attract talent, but also educate those that are in your community that may have good trades or good opportunities, but just haven't figured out how could they start their own business and grow a business here? So it's that overlap between talent and like economic development.
And so do we have to, I mean, in your experience, I mean, we've had this conversation about WeWorks for a long time. Is, is, is that an accelerator for the, for entrepreneur? Is, is, is that an accelerator for the, for entrepreneurs? Is it an asset? Should we really care? I mean, you do this, I live in a man by the river, you tell me.
Yeah, and I've, you know, I've watched incubators, and accelerators, and coworking space in the last thirty-five years in economic development, and the two places where I see it be successful, the space is, is nice to have, but it's either a partnership with a, a company or an institution that is sort of gives you opportunities, or the programming for it, in other words, the person that you have running it is a dynamic force, and programs things that get people excited, and they're willing to come to. So the, you know, what are you offering up? What are the lunch and learns, what are the programs that are offered, what are the networking opportunities? Like the Capital Factory, you go down to Austin, they're event-driven, I mean, they are all about the network, and never mind that they've got the Army Futures and some other things that they're working on, but creating that buzz here. You can, you can create a coworking space, but if you don't have the right programming, it's not gonna matter, so that's really what matters.
Have you seen that work outside of an urban core?
So Fargo, North Dakota, is one of the places I've done a couple of projects.
Is that the biggest city in North Dakota? I have no idea I'm asking here.
Oh, yeah, I guess, I guess it's, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's minus fourteen degrees when I was working there. But they, they have a corporate presence, a group that sold out to Microsoft, and so in a way, they had. And they have a program called Emerging Prairie, that over the last fifteen years, as I've watched them, has leveraged their projects into actually bringing, what's called from the National Science Foundation, an Innovation Engine Award. And so they are now like the leading research around drone technology for agriculture.
Whoa, wait, wait, okay.
Yeah, yeah, crazy stuff.
Wait, so, okay, you said their projects, so you had a bunch of people who sold their businesses for millions of dollars, decides, hey, listen, we're reinvesting the community. We're gonna create a, a space, an entrepreneurial space.
Called Emerging Prairie.
Yeah, and, and, okay, and that's what I was about to ask you, and they, they focus on a specific subject matter?
So they, so they, there was drone technology out of the, I think the Air Force Base, that's about fifty miles north of them, and some of those people spun out, and so they had a couple of groups there that were trying to do something special. But these guys sort of catalyzed it.
Yeah, might not.
And what they did is, they were very event-driven, so they were the first group to bring in the One Million Cups Entrepreneurship Program, where they do an event every month, and they celebrate entrepreneurship. They were the group that organized the first TED Talks for Fargo. You know, they were very event and creating buzz-driven, and the people showed up.
So we can be the entrepreneurial capital of Texas, just like we're the trail capital of Texas?
There you go.
In reference to the entrepreneurship, and, you know, I'm thinking, you know, I, maybe my definition of entrepreneurship is different, I mean, I understand it. But when you look at, in Flugerville, the small business owner, or the emerging small business owner, and, so would you throw that category into entrepreneurship, or is that a different category altogether?
Yeah, I mean, that's what's a longstanding debate within the entrepreneurship world, is where entrepreneurship versus like small business support. And typically, if it's, if it is a company that has its sights on more than just selling to your neighbor, you know, in the community, you know, restaurant, that I'm just gonna open a restaurant, and I need some small business support to handle, figure out how to handle my books, versus somebody who has a vision that says, you know, I'm gonna replicate something, or I'm gonna create something that can scale, or can go outside of the region, and then I can, you know, it's considered like a traded. I mean, entrepreneurship in the Austin area, you know, everybody thinks sort of tech and venture capital, but it comes in a number of different forms.
Well, I, I think about the Seattle company, the chip company that just got bought by PepsiCo for one point two billion dollars. I'm sure they started in their kitchen making.
Yeah, I remember when I was office downtown, eating the, they had the empanadas truck, you know, and by the day I went to the, the food truck, they told me the story of where they were gonna place their empanadas, you know, and what stores and what markets, you know, so it's a food truck that has a mindset.
Those are not really entrepreneurs, they're capitalistic frontiers people. Which is good.
Yeah, I'm gonna take that language.
What, what can you tell me about our, you know, current local talent? You know, I saw a lot in the presentation about the skillsets that are in demand and job postings, but what did we learn about the people who, who already live here?
Yeah, so.
We need more lawyers.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the, the, like, the commuting data captured part of that, but I've got the data on kind of the who's here, and what occupations they're in. I can't tell you specifically what their backgrounds are.
So when we look at the, the commuting data, you know, that's, that's gonna be job title, job function, more than skillset, but that could be helpful. Is that reflected in any of our recommendations as, you know, target industries? Should we be looking at, oh my goodness, my eyes got old this last week, professional services and technical services, or healthcare and social services, or what is that, admin support, public administration? I can kind of, I can kind of read it. Should we be focused on those, those sectors for recruitment?
Yeah, I mean.
And is that reflected in any of our recommendations?
That's a really good question.
No, I mean, you're, when you did your strategic plan, you know, they did look at, like, the occupational.
Yeah, I think we threw life sciences in there.
Yeah, life science is in there, which in this dataset also captures like healthcare, and so it captures the hospitals and others. And the fact that you guys have concentrations in those areas means that, you know, you have an advantage, but you do have to remember that, you know, the business that would be recruited here isn't just looking at Flugerville, they're looking at the labor draw area, to make that decision.
But, but based on what he said, because I think it's really important what he said, what talent pool do we have where, because, and it goes actually to both what they're saying, that, hey, listen, we're outsourcing, for better lack of term, this talent pool, they're leaving over here, but there's, there's something that they do that they can actually do here, and help go ahead and prosper and develop our local economy in something bigger than, you know, just they, just like you said, one-on-one, local service or something bigger. Because, I mean, I was being a little facetious, but the more you spoke, I thought about it, I was like, well, yeah, what about, so if somebody does practice like in a major law firm downtown, then, okay, I'm gonna open an office here, and then I'm gonna have from that office here, start going ahead and having firms' offices across the, across the state, and the payroll's gonna come from here, so we still get the taxes from here. Like, what do we see from a talent standpoint? Like, what, do we have any, like consultants or something like that? That's, that, like, hey, we're outsourcing people, because we know there's a lot of C-suite people that live, that live here, a lot. So, you know, to your point, you're saying, well, they would have to have those businesses come with them. Well, no, what if they just take their talent from the businesses and create their own?
Sorry, I was trying to pull it up so I could give you a more specific answer, because we do have a, like, a profile on the existing workforce. Can I send that to you?
You're welcome to, yes.
Okay, all right, all right, because I, I want to pull it up, but I want to make some.
I loved on page forty-two how you said that the key to a successful city, workforce city is to do with the soccer fields and.
How dare you, sir, how dare you.
All the life, right?
Yeah, I was appreciating that, you know, the report hasn't been quite that long. Next steps for us are to be available if the EDC, CDC has any questions on the tool in the future. You know, if they're, we're not going anywhere, we're right down the street, and so as I begin implementation, if there's any data that's needed, or, you know, we're only a phone call away.
How, how do we turn this study into a plan, into a set of actions?
Yep.
Who, who does that?
Yeah, well, that's, in terms of the PCDC and the staff, given our sort of first cut, and what we think priorities are. So how you integrate that into your overall work plan?
So it'll be part of programs, we'll get a presentation in the future, I guess, on, or developed, worked into the SEDs? Something along those lines.
Well, I think there's a lot of elements that, in your action ideas, that I think we've talked about in the past, we've probably have done some of that together collectively, otherwise we wouldn't have ended up with a firefighter fighter training academy, an EMS program in the schools, and I think a, a good portion of it, well, maybe not a good portion of it, but certainly part of the foundation is attempting, and I say attempting, to work closely with the school in terms of developing those targeted CTE programs that will help not only our young people, but also our adults that live in the community, as well as connecting with the Chamber of Commerce, and, and there's a lot of, I think there are a lot of stakeholders in the community that, that need to come together collectively. And I don't know in what format that would be, but to understand, hey, we're, we're all part of this community, how do we grow it? And how do we grow it in a, in a synergetic way that everybody is benefiting from that activity that the group would bring together, and they take away and contribute, or whatever they, whatever we decide to do with that particular organization or group of, of individuals. And that's assuming they want to do that, you know, but I, I think there's a lot of talent, a lot of resources that I think are available in the community that we can utilize. Any other questions? You sure, because they're here. I actually gave you guys an hour, I didn't tell you that, but I'm looking at my clock, I think we made it. And I appreciate it very much, thank you.
Thank you guys very much, it's a pleasure.
You bet. Our next agenda item, and I had asked members of the veteran community to be here at six, so I keep looking over there to the clock, it's not there. Sorry.
Five fifty-eight.
It's five fifty-eight. We do have some veteran members here already.
Still write twice a day.
And I was hoping we'd have a few more, and, and they may come in shortly, but let's go ahead and start anyway. So the Veterans Advisory Council, Krista, if you'll go back, one, Veterans Council, was something that I was at a veterans event.
Yes, you were.
Several months ago, where they had different vendors that were coming in to help support and provide services to veterans in the Flugerville area. And I believe it was sponsored by the American Legion, Philip, is that correct? I know I'm asking you a long.
DAV and the American.
Okay, a couple of groups in the, in the Flugerville community that are part of the veterans environment in Flugerville, and if you'll go to the next slide. And so as I began thinking about that, I thought, well, it might be a good idea to begin developing some type of foundation for, I know the veterans have been present at a number of events in the community, they have led parades. When we had parades, they've done the color guard at different events. They're also present during the Veterans Memorial Day ceremonies, and so they've been a very active part, I think, since the American Legion got started, as I recall. And so they've always had a, a huge presence, they've had a great relationship with the congressional offices in terms of recognizing veterans that served in the Vietnam War, and, and other wars, for that matter, and acknowledging their contributions to our country. And when I looked up some information, I'm sure you guys have looked this up too, that I didn't, I thought it was around three thousand, but according to the statistic, it's more like four to forty-five hundred veterans that are an estimate that live in Flugerville. They're probably more than that, I would guess. Usually we underestimate our, our data. Next slide. And so, as I looked at that, I looked around to some of the neighboring cities, and obviously, some of these make sense, because, for example, Colleen, why wouldn't they have a veterans advisory committee? They're a military community. Austin has a Austin Veterans Commission, Round Rock has a, a committee, Georgetown has a advisory board. And they all basically serve the same function, maybe a little different in different communities in terms of the types of services that they can afford veterans, and work within the city in terms of any recommendations and policies that would affect the veterans' community. And I think over the years, as long as I've been here, I think we've been very sensitive to our veteran community, and always acknowledging that they are a very important and integral part of the city of Flugerville. Next slide. And so, actually, Alan is here this evening. He had given us some information the last meeting, I believe, in terms of a, a model, and I took a little bit of, of information from that, simply to begin building a. Where we have an advisory council, has a mission statement, and I think it's a pretty good mission statement. And, next. And where they would have a role and objective within the city, advising on policies, event planning, which they do all the time. We just had, the American Legion just had their, what is it, tenth anniversary this week in Flugerville. And again, at the, the meeting that I was at several months ago, I was impressed with some of the younger veterans that are in our community that we don't know anything about, and they're not the Vietnam vets, and definitely we, we support and honor those people that go back that far. And, but I think there are younger veterans in the community that don't realize they have a resource, whether it's the American Legion, or DAV, you know, and there are a lot of other veterans' resources throughout the region as well. But I think for the city of Flugerville, and the organization that we have within the city, to be available to them and provide information, services, resources, referrals, whatever it may be. And I think the American Legion's already really doing that, in terms of, of those events that they have.
Bless you.
And plan for.
Thank you.
The other thing that was in that particular model was monitoring legislative, actually, that should be initiatives, not initialized, that impact veterans, because I think, you know, we as a council, and that's one of the items on the agenda tonight, is our legislative agenda, is that we don't think about veterans necessarily on our legislative side, but again, we need to think about our veterans and any of the legislation. I know there has been some talk over the last year or so, again, you know, as federal legislation goes, you never know where that's gonna land, but there was talk about a veterans clinic in the area, whether it's Flugerville or nearby. Nothing has really come back up on that, I'm sure it's still there somewhere, but again, that's something that the veterans organizations could certainly follow through on as well. Do I have another slide? Okay. So basically, the, the impact is pretty clear, is that we would have a veterans advisory council, similar to some of the other boards and commissions, and even like, for example, our youth advisory council, that gives young students an opportunity to understand and relate to government. relate to government. A little different path, but I think the Veterans Advisory Council would be more of a direct and impactful board and commission that would be part of the city umbrella. And so my recommendation is that we at least discuss this some more. And we have a couple of veterans that might want to come up and say a few words about their position on that. Alan or Mark, you want to come up?
Three seats.
All three?
We got three or four earlier. It's a four seat.
And have a chair.
Yeah, we're not trying to prank you.
And Philip, you were one of the charter members of the American Legion?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mark, you didn't want to come up? He's a Sagittarius, they always said in the background.
Most of you, most of y'all know me. I'm Philip Zendejas. I'm a U.S. Army veteran of the Vietnam War. Because of the high number of veterans and veteran families that have relocated to the great city of Flugerville, there are now two nationally recognized veteran organizations in Flugerville. Curly Lyerly, American Legion Post 154, it was established and chartered in 2014. And within the past year, Lone Star Chapter Four of the Disabled American Veterans, DAV, has relocated from Austin to Flugerville. Some of our local veterans are members of both organizations, and I'm one of those veterans. The American Legion is committed to the following: to mentor and develop youth leadership and sponsor wholesome programs in our community; to advocate patriotism and honor; to promote national security; and to continue our devotion to fellow service members and veterans. The DAV's primary mission is to assist veterans and their families to navigate the complicated veteran affair system, filing disability claims as a priority. With the growing number of military members that are transitioning from military to civilian life, it is imperative that the resources are available for them. A large number have and are relocating to Flugerville. Employment, education, mental health, and housing are a few examples that are important to veterans. When I got involved with the post and the chapter, my hair wasn't this gray. There were World War II Korean War veterans. Now there's only a couple of Korean War veterans left in our post and chapter. The younger veterans need you. Don't let them down. In order to accomplish our goals, we need a voice in the city. We need a place to meet and conduct our business and support from the city to achieve the goals of both organizations. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, council members and fellow citizens. I sit before you today to discuss the importance of establishing a Veteran Advisory Council in Flugerville. We are fortunate to live in a community that is growing and thriving. But as we expand, we must ensure that every voice is heard, especially the voices of those who have served and sacrificed for our freedoms. A Veterans Advisory Council would serve as a dedicated platform to address unique challenges faced by our veterans. It would allow our city to listen directly to their needs, ensuring that issues like healthcare access, mental health support, and employment opportunities are not overlooked. Veterans have given so much to our country. They deserve our attention, our support, and our appreciation. In Flugerville, we provide our, we, I'm sorry, in Flugerville, we pride ourselves on being a community where everyone belongs. But to achieve that, we must be proactive in bridging gaps. A Veteran Advisory Council would build stronger connections between veterans, city leadership, local businesses, and community organizations. It would be a vital step towards creating targeted programs supporting veteran-owned businesses and honoring those who have served through community events and commiserations. Sorry. Sorry. This council isn't just about providing services. It's about building a future where our veterans know that they are valued and heard. It is about recognizing that their experiences, insights, and contributions are critical to shaping the Flugerville we want to see. Let us take this opportunity to strengthen our city, uplift our veterans, and demonstrate that Flugerville is not just a place to live, but a community that cares. Thank you.
So I'll just make some quick comments. So, you know, the DAV moved here from Austin area, from the old VFW area. And I can tell you, we have done great strides in trying to improve what help is needed to the veterans. And we get calls now from everywhere. As far as Houston, people asking for help. Last night, we had somebody that came in for help that they came from Buta, because they heard that our organization helps the veterans. We go with the extra steps. We go do the paperwork for them. We walk them through these processes. And as pretty bad as the lady was crying and about the issues that she had and help she wasn't able to get from other organizations. So we pride ourself on what we can do for our veterans and their families. And so our family is Flugerville. And we want everybody to know that the organization from Flugerville helps everyone. Doesn't mean you have to be from Flugerville, but we want to be the center point of that help, right? So please help us in getting veterans organization established here and make us a part of the city of Flugerville.
Well, I think it's important that we certainly evaluate this. And of course, my position is that, you know, fully support an advisory council for Flugerville because it basically, you know, provides a foundation for veterans. They would come from all cross references of military service. You would have a board, not a board, but I guess a council made up of, I think Alan, you'd indicated maybe five board members. It could be more than that. It just depends on how the structure ultimately shakes out. And, you know, we can look to these other cities to see how many, you know, people are involved there in some of the processes they follow. I think they're very similar. But I think that when you have outside organizations or companies or corporations, whether it's public, private, or even military that say, hey, you know, we're thinking about Flugerville, what is in Flugerville for veterans? And if they see the Veterans Advisory Council as part of the city umbrella, I think that is a big feather for Flugerville. And so I think, you know, we have grown to the point where we're not a small city anymore, and a very fast-growing city. And we have a significant number of veterans that I think deserve our attention, as you always have had. And, but in a sense that you have more of a structured organization. That's not to say that the American Legion Post is going to go away, or the DAV is going to go away. That's just an adjunct part of the roles that you guys play. And so I'm excited to think about having a Veteran Advisory Council in Flugerville that is supported by the city of Flugerville.
I think it's, I mean, I think all of us agree, this is a great idea. And you had me more thinking about, particularly when I heard some of the roles, when you talked about the VA system, because we used to have folks who did a good job, who would volunteer to help those folks navigate that, because that's an interesting system in itself. The question for me now is, how do we do that further? So I think, I think this is, I think this is a no-brainer. I mean, I really do. So, but now questioning about, because we've talked about it for years, about space and other places that you guys were using. What do you envision for that? Because I think that part of what you all do, and what you do so well, and why you have people from Buta and other areas coming back through is that they do have an opportunity to meet y'all somewhere, have conversations, make a demonstra difference on things. Is your space up to par now? Do you guys feel like you're comfortable in where you can meet, where you can conduct business, how you can go and reach out to the community? Or is that something you have in mind as well?
Well, okay, so what we had before was very limited. So we weren't able to help veterans because of time limitations. We do have a space now that we do use. But the piece to help veterans would be a greater availability if we had our own building as such, where we could open up daily for helping service members, right? Because there are different needs of every single one that come across, right? So our vision is to have our own building that two organizations could actually share together and provide services to the veteran organizations, I mean, to the veterans and their families as well. So.
If I may interject here, we started in the, the American Legion started in the Flugerville Public Library. And we met there from 2014 until the pandemic. And then, you know, we had to stop meeting. And we didn't meet for quite a while. And the Lions Club was gracious enough to offer. And that's where we've been meeting. And so with that, the door opened for the DAV. And so both organizations now meet there. The Legion on the third Monday of the month, and the DAV on the first Wednesday of the month. And of course, like I said, the Lions Club has been very gracious to let their, let us use their building and their facilities for different, different projects that we've had there. And we would, we could use a place of our own. We have to be hauling our stuff back and forth from a storage unit.
That's what I was about to ask you, is where do you store the stuff down outside of Caesar's house?
Well, it's all in Philip's. Some of it's in my house, but we do have a storage. Some at a storage unit. So we do have probably three or four different areas where we keep all of our supplies and things that we use, so.
Are your supplies typically paperwork, flyers, or are we talking tables and equipment? What kind of supplies are we talking?
It's a sporkage board of different materials that we give.
And then can you give me an idea from a, call it a short, medium, and long-term approach? You know, right now, you're saying, well, you meet once a month. You've got space that you're allowed once a month. Do you need space once a week or twice a week?
Service officer for the DAV. I have had, since Friday, I've handled four claims. Four veterans from Leander, from Round Rock, from Austin, nobody from Flugerville, but, and one from Jasper, Texas. So, you know, we need, we need
You need a dedicated space.
Where they can come through. And as a matter of fact, what, what Mark was saying, last night, a young lady came from Buta because she wanted to see who she's dealing with. I'm talking to her on the phone, emailing her. And she says, I'm not going to give you my social security number. You know, I don't even know you. So when she saw me, she said, I knew it was you when she saw me. So, but we do, we really need someplace where we can have, I mean, at least daytime hours that we can meet with veterans that need assistance with their claims.
Yeah, and the three ago did give us time, and theirs on Mondays, which was great. But it's very limited time as well. So we need a space that, you know, because, you know, it's the service members who need the help. And we have to work with their times as well, right? So there's several service officers, I'm a certified service officer as well. So last night, for instance, like we're talking about, the lady was going to have to come to my house after the meeting to do the rest of the paperwork, right? And so that's, that's the only other alternatives we have, is we get to go find another place, and they come to our homes to go do this work.
I was just thinking about some ideas of places that are already operating and open. And I was thinking about churches possibly that are not open and operating during the week, that you all could possibly use that space. Is that an option?
Right now, we're using First Baptist Church for the Veterans Day Ceremony. And they've been gracious enough to let us use that every, with the exception of last year, it was at the Lions Club. But just about every year, we have it at First Baptist Church because of inclement weather. And so
Well, I was actually thinking about a space like Monday through Friday.
That's where I'm going with this, because I don't want to rock the boat at First Baptist and, hey, ask them, I don't know anything about any of the other churches.
And to be clear, is when you're utilizing someone else's space, their time, it's their space. And when they have something else, we must give in, right? And so that's the same, we do the same thing at the Lions Club. We have a certain amount of time we do there. And any other time, we have to try to coordinate with them as well.
Sure, but not a lot happening during the churches during the day between nine and five. Church secretary.
So let me, you know, I think when we, when we've been talking about our downtown east and our City Hall project, we even approached the idea, is this something where, you know, having a dedicated office accessible to the public in a, in a public facility, is that enough? Or are you talking about meeting spaces and, and storage spaces?
For right now, for the time being, we would need an office space, you know, if somebody had an office that we could use.
Like just one desk and a filing cabinet?
Yeah, and we can hook up a computer and, and meet veterans there.
So let's, let's take a step back here for just
We may be talking about the things that this commission should recommend.
Well, I was going to say that in the interim, we should probably ask the leaders of the organizations to coordinate with the mayor and our city manager to come up with an idea of how this committee should look.
So speaking about that, I think I had, I remember having conversations with staff, I want to say five years ago, maybe even six years ago, talking about this very topic. Because we were, the DAV was looking for a place, and we were talking about ways of getting our veteran community involved. I think we just published a statistic saying that one in four households in Flugerville have a veteran or active-duty service member. And so we, we have a large veteran population here. And I had a conversation with staff about creating just such an organization. And the feedback that we had at the time, or that I received at the time, was why just a veteran board? Why not open it up to other groups? And I think that evolved into what we now refer to as the Equity Commission. And, and the idea was to have veterans on that, on that board, along with other members of the community, seniors or youth or whatever, right? I mean, the idea was to have that board be representative of the community to look for and/or identify needs that might normally be overlooked, you know, from whatever 80% solution we're affecting. And so I know you said we're all on board with this. But I would, I would like to ask, ask the question, how, other than having a specific purpose, which we could go and create specific purpose boards for seniors and for multiple other, other groups, other than having a kind of a single purpose, what would, what would, what would this board or this commission accomplish that can't be accomplished by increasing the membership and activity on the Equity Commission with, with the addition of more veterans?
So if I may interject, sir, that's an excellent point. So with the board, I think the most important thing with the board itself is when somebody moves to Flugerville, because I moved to Flugerville after retiring in 2016. I did not know about the DAV or I came across the American Legion, but I really did not see a big veteran presence in the city. If we have a Veteran Advisory Council, then when a veteran moves in to Flugerville, they'll know that the city supports veterans, because that's how veterans would think. When a veteran hears, you said the Equality
Equity Commission.
I'm sorry, the Equity Commission, they just might overlook that. Veterans have, you know, just like everybody, they have specific needs. And I think if a veteran moves into Flugerville and they see that they have a Veterans Advisory Board, then they would feel that they are, their interests are in mind.
Well, and I'll also add that we saw the numbers a little while ago. What did it say? Six to eight percent are veterans. I probably would argue that it's higher than that. But if you also add family members and other ancillaries, well, well over 20% in this community.
What we talked about, what we've always said for the last, I feel like a decade, is that one out of five families is either a veteran, him or herself, son or daughter, a veteran, someone in the family relating to that. or veteran, someone in the family related to that. And that made a demonstra difference in how we approached job processes, workforce, other
Right.
So we got the word from the governor's office. To your point, and I was thinking about what you said, and I think Alan said it well, is that even for the state of Texas, I remember on our websites, like Health and You, we'd contact the Health and Union Services, the Controlers Office, everything like that. There's somewhere on each website for veteran help on all the websites, and that's required by law. And that happened, I don't know, like six or seven years ago. I was looking that up right there with that hotlines and made available for. I think that it's a unique constituency that brokers out outside of it. And I think that when you're going to Google, as you said, search for that as well, that's something they look for. I agree, like, with the thought process, like, well, how's this not a different, just a subgroup in what we're talking about, we run Equity? Because when we started the Equity Commission, honestly, we had a lot of veterans. We were part of that advisory committee to get that started and made the recommendation around the Equity Commission. But I think for my purposes, based on those specific needs that you're asking for, I just think that you break them out. That's me. I can see what you're talking, I definitely can understand where you're coming from.
Well, I can add that for Austin, I remember when they put that together, and the idea wasn't just to serve just veterans individually, but it was also, as they mentioned in their speeches, to serve the community as well. How the veterans will serve that community through the other actions and other events that they have. I'd make the argument that the Equity Commission really doesn't do a whole lot for our community. Just going to say it. I'll put it out there. Veteran Community yearly does multiple events, giving back to our community. They, we do scholarships. Mr. Zendejas did mention earlier, all the stuff that the veteran community does for the ISD and some of the other things. So looking at it from those perspectives and how I look at it from how the veterans can serve, continue serving our community, rather than how the community can help out the veterans. Because we're going to be here, we're going to continue to be here, we all will, and coexist. Yes, it is semiotic. And I was going to say something else a little while ago. No.
I actually feel that the veterans have a